I'll now call to order a regular meeting dated Thursday, September 5th, 2019. We'll have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Guidry.
Thank you, Mr. President. May we all bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come this evening in the most humble and gracious way we know how. Giving thanks upon all the many blessings you've bestowed upon us as your Christian people. We ask a special blessing upon this governing body tonight for that decisions we make may be fair, honest, and to the enlightenment of what you would have us do as your Christian people, Heavenly Father. We just ask for a blessing over the state of Louisiana, this parish, and this city, Heavenly Father. And we ask a special blessing upon all the families that are in Florida going through this hurricane, Heavenly Father. We ask that you would protect them and keep them in your Son's name, Jesus. We ask all these many blessings in your Son's name. Amen.
May we face the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Guidry.
You may welcome, Mr. President.
I'd like to remind everyone to please silence all electronic devices. And if you'd like to speak on the agenda items, before the item comes up on the agenda, there's blue slips in the back of the room. Please fill those out and turn them in to Ms. Jessica here in the front. Roll call, Ms. Jessica.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshar?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
Here.
Mr. Bears?
Here.
Mr. Brain?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Farnham?
Here.
Mr. Guidry?
Here.
Mr. Guillory?
Yep.
Mr. Landry was unable to attend. Mr. Latour?
Here.
Vice President Mayo?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mrs. Trimmie was unable to attend, and President White?
Here. Thank you, Ma'am.
Item number four, appearance by Ms. Wendy Agalard, candidate for Calcasieu Parish Assessor's. Name and position, please.
I'm Wendy Curphy Agalard, Calcasieu Parish Assessor. I want to thank the jury very much for allowing me to be here this evening. As I said, I'm Wendy Agalard. I'm currently serving as the Calcasieu Parish Assessor. I'm up for reelection on October 12th, and I wanted to take just a couple minutes of your time to remind everybody about me and the Assessor's Office. As you know, the Assessor's Office is responsible for valuing all of the property in our parish for ad valorem taxation purposes. But despite what people think, our office doesn't assess taxes. We assess value. We're appraisers. We're appraising the value of the properties for the purpose of taxing. We do not set the millage rates for the individual taxing districts, nor do we send out the notices, nor do we collect the tax funds. All of that is done by other offices, and our office is appraisers. That's what we do, appraise valuation. I started my career in the Assessor's Office more than 23 years ago. I've served as the Assessor for the last eight years. I started at the front counter signing homestead exemptions for the people coming in from the front and freezes and so forth. I worked my way up and through the office, the transfer and department and mapping department, the IT department, office manager, chief deputy, and became the interim Assessor when the previous Assessor resigned. After being elected in 2011, I streamlined our budget, launched the office's first website, opened the West House Satellite Office, and we've also started the process of scanning all of 30 years' worth of paper files into digital format, which is an undertaking in itself. We've also improved our software technology. I'm currently working with our software company to do a new map-based program and camera project that will not only be utilized in Calcasieu Parish, but also all the way across the state. I'm a three-time certified Assessor with more than 680 education hours, including a variety of appraisal courses, orientation courses, industrial and oil and gas courses, actuarial sciences courses, and investment courses. I currently serve on the Assessors Association for Louisiana. I'm on the Board of Directors, the Retirement Board of Trustees, the Orientation Legislative Oil and Gas, Watercraft, and Tax Credit Housing Committees. I am the Chairman of the Louisiana Assessors Association ITIP Committee. I previously served as the 2017 and 2018 Treasurer for the Assessors Association, and I'm currently serving as the 2019 Vice President for the Association. I was honored to be recognized for the positive transformation of our office by being named the 2015 Assessor of the Year for Louisiana. I hope that you can see that this office is very important to me. It is more than a title. It is my passion. It is my career. And I respectfully and humbly ask for your continued support to be serving as your Calcasieu Assessor, and I'm more than happy to take any questions if anybody has any.
I do have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Before we start this meeting, we were talking about our different positions that we hold office-wise.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if I could do yours.
(laughing).
When it comes to taxes, you're not the most liked person.
No, not always.
But you've done a great job in your position, and I hope you continue to do your job.
Thank you. I appreciate that, sir.
Appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ma'am.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ma'am. Item five, receive report from Mr. Bruce Boye with the United States Census Bureau. Mr. Tom.
Good evening. Tom Hay for Communications and Media Director here for the police jury. As you all know, the 2020 United States Census is quickly approaching us. It's very important that we get as much participation from the citizens of Calcasieu Parish as possible. So here tonight, we have Mr. Bruce Boye with the U.S. Census Bureau. He is here, and he's asking for you to adopt a resolution in support of the census and in the creation of our Calcasieu Parish Complete Count Committee, which we've already begun working on, assembling the people that will get the word out about the census. So with that, Mr. Boye.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bruce Boye. My address is 104 Constitution Street. I live in New Orleans. First of all, thank you for allowing me to be here. I hope you got our packages, and the census is very important. I've actually been in Louisiana for about three and a half years, moved here from Dallas. So people ask me, am I a Cowboys fan? I say, yeah, I'm a nice Cowboys. Yeah, of course, of course I am. I haven't changed any affiliation. With all jokes aside, let me kind of give you some of the points that are also in there. First of all, the census is much easier than it was before. This is going to be the first time that the census is going to be online or by the internet. So we're looking for about 90% of the people to do the census online, which is great. Calcasieu Parish is one of the better parishes in Louisiana. In 2010, about 65% of the people in Louisiana self-reported. Calcasieu Parish was a little bit higher than that. The way you guys run your organization or run your government is very well, and you can tell that with that. But I want you guys to know that $675 billion a year is distributed between all the 50 states, and that's based on the census numbers. So when a state under reports or a community under reports, those numbers are then divvied out or used to determine how much of that money goes forward. So $675 billion distributed between the 50 states, and Louisiana unfortunately was one of the last states or lowest states on those numbers and reporting. And part of that, part of that obviously was Katrina happening between 2000 and 2010. But the other portion of that is that it is also based on how reapportionment is done. And if you remember, in 2010, we lost a seat in the House, and we only have six. We had seven before then. So in the net gain, you could actually, if you had more people reporting, you could make it look like you had more people, and that's how everything is done. Unfortunately, or fortunately, that's the way the system works. The money is distributed based on those numbers. And one of the things we try to tell people is that, is that it's not the need that makes the difference in how the money is distributed or the, or the, or the seats are, it's based on the numbers. So if people report, that's what they're going to use. And the portion about that that's really important is that those numbers are in place for the next 10 years. So the budget that you guys have been working with is the budget based on the reports that were done 10 years ago. Even though we have surveys and things out there that can predict, they only use the census numbers, and the census counts every single person in the United States, the inhabitants. It's been happening since 1790. It's constitutional, and that's what we're looking for. The census people are apolitical. We're not looking one way or the other. We just want to make sure we count everyone once, only once, in the right place. And what I mean by in the right place is that if we have workers or people that are living in Calcasieu Parish, and they stay here more than 50% of the time, then that's where they should be counted. Because the infrastructure, the funds or the infrastructure that is being used here, so we're trying to make the money follow where the infrastructure is being used. So it's very important to make sure that we get that word out, that one, the census is secure. We're using the top-of-the-line servers and security measures that are out there for best practices. We're either at or above any best practices that are out there, and so we're making sure that we take care of the information. We can't share that information even with other government agencies. Most people don't realize that no matter what you hear, is that our information is statistical. So basically, we put it all together, and you can, you can glean information about certain communities, but you can't glean any information about any individuals. So even if someone is, you know, condone anyone defrauding the government, but we can't report someone based on what we find out in the census to another portion of the government. We don't share our information with ICE or FBI or anyone else like that. There's major programs that are out there, and we can even talk about how the census money is used for, we talked about infrastructure. We know we have the I-10 Bridge over there. That money's going to come out of partially federal, it's going to come out of some state and maybe some of you guys, but it wouldn't be nice to have those funds come mainly out of the federal government. And the way that happens is, again, it's based on your population. And since Calcasieu is one of those places that is actually growing and expanding, you guys are like in a much better position. In fact, by my calculation, you guys are actually taking money from other parishes if you want to give it back. It's okay.[685.12][685.12](laughing). But those are some of the things that are out there. Our asks are, and we thank you for having Tom and Amy. We've already started the Complete Count Committee because we found out, especially in Louisiana, that people are only going to listen to people that they trust, and those people are going to be people that are close to them. So we developed Complete Count Committees to distribute the message that's out there, that the census is safe, that these, this is everyone's civic duty to make sure that if you want to receive the kind of funds or programs, then you need to do your civic part. That money comes from somewhere, and we would like it to come from the federal government. So we need people to do the part. But that message has to come from someone that they trust. So we ask that we develop or bring local leaders there to pass that message on to them, whether in the government, community, faith-based groups. We go over, we will supply and provide all the resources you need to do that. As far as I'll come down, I'll be the dartboard for people to ask those tough questions to, and I'll say, I don't know.[744.41][744.41](laughing). But we'll provide it, and we'll provide the training, and we'll go out. So I have the parishes all the way from Vernon all the way down to Cameron, across to Allen, and some in the middle. But I chose these areas because of the way people respond. I really appreciate that. So our asks, we already have a liaison with Tom, that's great. We started a Complete Count Committee. You guys are actually the first Complete Count Committee out of the eight parishes I have, which is great. And we just kind of move on from there, but we wanted to make sure that we got the buy-in from the top and that the message is going clearly to you guys, so it can pass on to the community, so we can get the word out that doing the census does make a difference, and everyone's reporting does count. I'll take any questions from anyone.
At first, I'd like to say thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for your presentation. We do have a few. Mr. Andrew Pont.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to thank you for being here. Correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm not sure where I'm going with all of this, but in the past, as I appreciate it, it was kind of a one-on-one, door-to-door census count, number one. And secondly, also, the packet came in the mail to be filled out. Do you all still plan to do that?
So you can do census any of the three ways. We are trying to get more people to do it online, but you can do it by internet, you can do it by phone for the first, internet-by-phone by first time, and you can still mail it in. The actual way it's going to work is that around March 20th, 23rd, you're getting all the people that have good addresses, and for, to start with that group, they're getting a letter in the mail with some kind of code and a number that affiliates their address with that, with that family, and then they'll be able to register online. When they register online, they will get one more notice to remind them, but they won't get any more notices after that. The other people who don't respond, they get a couple more notices beyond that. And on April 1st, it's Census Day, and we'll continue to, because it is online, we'll be able to interactively update the information, so you'll be able to tell how many people are responding to the census. For areas like the homeless, we have special committees and special groups that go out to homeless. We talked about the colleges. We have, we call them group areas. The, and this is one of those things, we talked about over 50%. The people who are at college would actually be counted at the college and not at their house. So those are the kind of things that we need to get out to people so they understand that. But you'll be able to do any one of the ways you want, and if you don't respond by the fourth time, they'll be knocking on your door, asking, why aren't you responding?
Well, I'm glad you have checks and balances, because this country lives in the fast lanes all the time. And I'm going to tell you, my experience as long as I've been here is that you got to be constantly reminded that it's, you have to put a little effort. And I agree with it, the census is so important for multiple reasons, not just the money thing. I mean, that's great that the money is involved, but I think the fact that with the elections and the number of people that would need to know how many are actually in this country or at least as close as we can get. But again, I thank you for being here and sharing your information with us, and best of luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And I yield back, sir.
Sir, Mr. Bears?
Thank you, Mr. President. So right now, with all the workers from out of town, is this same thing, kind of like the college students? I mean, if these guys and ladies are living here full-time?
They should be counted here.
Okay.
And over 50%. And if not, on April 1st, wherever they are, that's where they should be counted.
So, okay, I'm just, just trying to think through, like, I don't know how they'll be initially contacted.
You're going to have an argument with Texas, but...
No, no, I know, but I'm just, just, you know, y'all have a heck of a task ahead of you. I know it's, that's probably, you're going to have to go a non-traditional route to get those folks to respond, but, yeah, I mean, they've been here for two or three years, and they're going to be here for a little while longer. Hey, it may, it may upset the bell curve or skew it one way or the other, but hey, they're here, and they're using our, our, our infrastructure.
You're using your infrastructure. That includes the Cousin Eddie that comes to your house and stays on your couch.[1005.75][1005.75](laughing). That person should be counted, because that person is using your roadways. That person is going over those potholes. And again, we're trying to get the money back to where the infrastructure is being used.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Farnham?
Thank you, Mr. President. Along those same lines, I was wondering about the college students.
Yes, sir.
Out-of-state college students that come here, may be here, may have already been here three years and they're in their senior year, so they're going to get counted here, and we're going to get credit for that for the next 10 years?
Yes, sir.
That's pretty good. Also, the construction workers, they've been here for two or three years already, and they're going to be here for another year, two, or five. Don't know how long, but it should definitely help Calcasieu Parish's numbers and statewide raise our overall population up, possibly to where we get another congressman in Washington.
It could. I can't comment on that one way or the other, but yes, it definitely could. And that's, again, it balances itself out, because you could easily have someone that left right before, the year before, and been there 10 years. But yes, you should.
Doesn't look like there's any downside.
No.
For us in Louisiana or even Calcasieu Parish, for those kind of numbers to be counted our way, because it, we've probably been counted in the opposite direction many years when we had a lot of our construction workers from Louisiana and New York and California and Texas and all over the place, they weren't counted here at that time either. So this could be a double whammy for us, that gets our population back up to where it was several years ago, before we lost a lot.
And that's why I go by my net gain theory. If we increase by 30% reporting and the other states only increase by 10%, we will show, and like I said, really, realistically, that's what Calcasieu already has done compared to the other parishes. But we're still below the other states.
These are really the things that our, that our citizens need to understand, is what this means for them.
Yes.
It could ultimately mean lower taxes to some degree in some areas. If we're getting the federal funds that we deserve, it doesn't have to come out of their pocket locally. It comes out of their pocket one way or another, but at least they're not getting doubled, doubled up for it.
And I like the word you used, deserve, because this is your money. It's not...
Yeah. So it's, it's, it's every citizen's money, whether it comes from the federal government or whether it comes from state or whether it comes from Calcasieu. It's all their money. The online aspect of it, so if, what Francis had alluded to was the, you get, you actually get a letter in the mail that has a code on it.
Yes.
That will, will help decrease the number of maybe people that are reporting twice or...
Well, the code is affiliated with the address, so you can't, you can't use one without the other.
That's right. A house is one thing, and then the code's got to verify that it's coming from that house.
Exactly. So you would, if you tried to do it twice, you would have to use a code in the house again.
Probably everybody that has an address, a legitimate address in this state's going to get a letter with a code on it.
Exactly.
And it's their choice whether they do it online or whether they're going to do it paper or whether you're going to come knock on their door.
Or they, or they do it at all, yes, exactly. It's still their choice, but like you said, the Complete Count Committees are the way we found, from best practices in 2010, is how to get the word out and to increase the likelihood of someone to respond. There are areas that are hard to, hard to count that we will, Tom and I and the group we met with today, we talked about some of those, but we'll continue to go over those areas, and they will come up with ways to reach them. I'll help them develop kind of overall plan, but it's going to be those people that know the people that are going to be, develop the plan and how to implement it.
So getting, getting that message out that reporting is crucial to not only the citizens of this parish, but the entire state is pretty key.
Oh, please, yes.
So thank you for being here, and thank you for sharing this information with us, and I yield back.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Guidry.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I, again, want to applaud you for your effort in what you're doing to make sure that the count is correct, because it's extremely important in a lot of the districts, because I know that the count will somehow determine the makeup and the proportion made up the district as to what those numbers are.
Yes, they're all based on it.
And when those, when those numbers come back, everyone will have a look at what those numbers look like in their district, so that they can know that, what they're looking at number-wise, because some years back, 10 years ago, we had some district that almost changed because of the numbers were a little bit different. And that's something I think that's extremely important to our jurors, is that you've got to look at the numbers in your district to make sure that the makeup is correct for what you're representing. And I think a lot of times, those numbers can sometimes screw out as to how the representation will look, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct in what I'm saying?
So let me address two of those things. One, I'm glad you brought that up, because we, I talked about training. We have interactive programs. One's called Response Outreach Area Mapper, where you can actually see what, where we think the areas are going to be hard to count. And also during the census time, it's going to be updated every, every day, so you'll be seeing who's, how many people are responding. You won't be seeing who's responding, but you'll be able to watch that number. And so we'll get back with you. So I mentioned what happens up to April 1st. After April 1st, there'll be one more chance, where say, these are the areas that aren't responding. You guys have one more chance to get them to respond by like the end of June, but after June, those numbers are solid. As far as the, how they use the numbers to map, as far as state, that's going to be with the state, but I will say it is based on census. Everything's based on census numbers. How they use their algorithm and how they skew it one way or the other is up to them, but they are based. We report back to the president the numbers by the end of 2020, and reapportionment is done by, by mid, next, mid-2021, we report that portion back.
That's important, because there are some districts in Calcasieu Parish have already gotten an influx of people, close to 2,800 to 3,500. That's actually in addition to what was already there. So it's extremely important that that's looked at and know that the lines that are drawn for your district, you need to be aware of those.
Yeah, I, I could say that, all I can say is that the numbers will be reported and will show you where they are, and every person that has the address or where we can, special communities like homeless, when we talk about group homes, veterans, things like that, we have groups in the parish, excuse me, our Complete Count Committee will work with that.
I appreciate it, and thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
I yield back, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? Thank you, sir.
I forgot to mention my colleague here, Kelly, but she's our media person, and she, if you don't see me, if the questions get too hard, I'll bring her up.[1457.62][1457.62](laughing). Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate your hospitality.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll entertain, Mr. Bean? At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
For the resolution of support for the Complete Count Committee.
Go move.
Resolutions support.
We have a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Guidry. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? All right, item carries. Item six, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane?
President, we have three applications before you tonight and recommend that they be approved.
Move.
Move on second.
I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Abshar. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Seven, consideration of approving payments of all current invoices. I have a motion by Mr. Latour and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Eight, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated August 1st, 2019. I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Latour. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Eight carries. Nine, consideration of approving the Budget Committee report dated August 29th, 2019. Mr. Brain?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Committee met on August 29th and recommended approving request. One, Ward 1, $34,710, Community Center and Playground District, number four of Ward 1. Ward 2, $6,120, Ward 2, Fire Protection District, number one. Ward 4, District 12, $5,000, City of Sulfur. Ward 4, District 11, $36,400, Ward 4, Fire Protection District, number four. Ward 4, District 13, $5,000, Ward 4, Fire Protection District, number four. Ward 4, District 13, $5,000, Waterworks District, number 11 of Ward 4 and 7. B, it's from the Parish-wide Grants, is Southwest Louisiana Convention and Visitor Bureau, $20,000. And Chamber, Southwest Louisiana, $50,000. That's the end of my report, and I make a motion to accept.
Second. I have a motion to accept by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. McMillan. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Nine carries. Ten, consideration of approving Public Works Committee report dated August 29th, 2019. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Works Committee meeting met on August 29th. Item A, recommended approving following requests. One, receive, received a presentation by Calcasieu 4-H Club, LSU Agriculture Center, Mr. Jimmy Mo. Two, temporary servitude right of use agreements for LA 30, 92 Lake Street and Ham Reid Road. Three, approving act of settlement of agreements for Nibless Bluff Road and Bridge Replacement Realignment Project. And four, approving the following items of Newcomer Road Bridge Replacement Project. A, sale and purchase of property agreement. B, temporary servitude and right of usage agreement. Five, approving the parish's participation in federal off-systems bridge rehabilitation and replacement program agreement. Item six, we accepted the following subdivisions. Northern Ridge Estates Phase 2 Subdivision, A. B, Saddle Ridge Phase 1 Subdivision. C, Sugar Cane Towns Phase 1 Subdivision. And D, Potter's Cove Phase 1 Subdivision. Seven, authorize engineering, parish engineering to advertise for the North Perkins Ferry Road Bridge Replacement Project. I send them our report. I make a motion to receive the report.
Motion to receive report by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Latour. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Item 11, consideration of approving the agenda committee report dated August 29th, 2019. I have a motion by Mr. Gilery and a second by Mr. Guidry. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Eleven carries. Twelve, is an advised item that a regular meeting on October 3rd, 2019 at 5:30 PM, the police jury intends to discuss and recommend that a resolution be adopted calling a special election on April 4th, 2020 to renew the authority to levy and collect one and a half cent sales tax, sales tax and use tax in Sales Tax District Number 4A for a period of 10 years and use to continue improving resurfacing and maintenance parish roads, parish road drainage, solid waste collection and disposal, transportation routes in major intersection and authority to fund the proceeds of the tax into a bond for such purposes.
Move on 12.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. All the advised items. We have discussion. Mr. Fornum?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't see in here where it calls or talks about wards 2 through 8. Is that needed to be in there or does it matter?
No, this is a good point, Mr. Fornum. If you look at line three where it calls it Sales Tax District 4A, District 4A in the tax, in the legal reference to this will tell you it's wards 2 through 8. That's a good, I'm glad you brought that up as a reminder, and most people know this, but this particular tax is levied in everywhere except Ward 1, which is the Moss Bluff-Gillis area, and that goes back to 1992. It's kind of an old story, but that is, that is correct.
So I guess that leads me to the second half of the question. Does Ward 1 want to join in on this and get a convenience center? I yield. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you for throwing some money on the bus. No runovers. Any objection? That item carries. Thirteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the renewal of Cooperative Endeavor Agreement for the 2019 through 2022 Calcu Parish Local Coastal Program. I have a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Bears? Discussion?
It's the fourth time he's said his name and I was the one who did it. Francis hasn't sounded that young in a long time.
Not in a long.
I blame that on the vice.
He's getting my vibe.
Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Fourteen, consideration of adopting an ordinance, rescinding ordinance number 7237 and further authorize the re-advertising of said property. I have a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Any objection? Fourteen carries. Fifteen, consideration of adopting ordinances allowing for disposition for each of the following adjudicated properties. A, 706 VE Washington Avenue. B, 1211 North Simmons Street. C, 1202 Sally Mae Street. I have a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Gilery. Do we have any discussion, Mr. Gilery?
Well, I don't know who to go send this to. I was just gonna wonder, since they counseled the program over there with the adjudicated properties, what are they doing with it? At the city they counseled the...
Yeah, we can check. There are some representatives in planning and development, but I don't know if they have that answer. I do know, Mr. Gilery, that the contractual arrangement we have with the city and theirs with the North Lake Charles, Lake Charles North Development Authority.
Has been counseled.
It's just, it goes through. I don't, I don't have an immediate answer for that, but it's, it's still being done, but it may just be who handles it there. If it's okay, we'll follow up very quickly with a more specific answer.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. President.
Mr. Scott?
And I would like to know if any of them are in the floodplain, floodway or inundation areas, as always. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any objection? Fifteen carries. Sixteen, consideration of authorizing to notify the following property owners to show cause at a public hearing on October 24th, 2019 as to why the structures on properties as stipulated should not be condemned. A, 4107 Carless Drive. B, 221 Chili Westland Road. C, 3493 M OJ Road. D, 2509 North Flounder Drive. E, 212 Perdim Road. Prudham Road. F, 130 Scales Road. G, 1906 Woodall Lane. H, 266 Cassie Lane. Need a motion?
Sixteen, all bullets.
I have a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. Latour. Sorry about that. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Sixteen carries. Seventeen, consideration of approving the submittal of an application sponsor agreement for the Family Daycare Home Food Program. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Bears. Did I get that right?
Couldn't have got it wrong.
Do we have any discussion? Mr. Gilery?
Right quick, I just want Mr. Tarek to just come up and just briefly tell everybody how great of a program this is, if you don't mind, Mr. Tarek.
Name and position with the parish, please.
Tarek Pali, Director of Human Services. The Child Home Daycare is a great program.
It's a great one.
That's a good one. Thank you, Mr. Tarek.
But seriously, the Child Home Daycare program's been around the parish for about the last 20-plus years. It's where we provide the home meals for the daycares in the 4th parish area for persons who have daycares in their home. So these are individuals who are keeping children six years and under. And they can't have more than six children in the home at that particular time.
Thank you, Mr. Tarek. Just wanted the people to know. Thank you, Mr. Tarek.
You're welcome.
Mr. President.
Any further discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Eighteen, consideration of adopting a resolution accepting 1020 Ryan Street Demolition Project is substantially complete. I have a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Latour. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Eighteen carries. Nineteen, take appropriate action on the following bids and/or proposals received by the parish purchasing agent. A, Canine Food. Staff recommends that the low responsible and responsive bid of Fletcher's Feed and Farm Supply, Number 4, be accepted. B, three, three, or, three 2019 or newer jet-vac trucks with bulldozer sled. Staff recommends permission to re-advertise for bids. C, Ready Mix Concrete. The staff recommends that the respective low responsible and responsive bids of Dunham Price LLC and PAI Ready Mix LLC be accepted. D, Patton Street Bridge Replacement Project. Parish engineer recommends that the low bid in the amount of $2,170,824.15 of Maverick, Americ LLC be accepted.
Move on 19, all bullets.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Fornum on all bullets and a second by Mr. McMillan. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Bears?
Mr. President, Mr. Connor, I know it may be a bit early, but that, that, that project, when do you see that timeline beginning?
Bears, if Ward is denied, then it would probably go into construction probably January, probably the latest February of next year.
Do you have a, I guess, an idea of how long the road will be totally closed? Or will it be totally closed at all?
It will be closed. It'll be a total closure. But what we're planning on doing before we start construction of the bridge is we have in this project intersection improvements at Mosswood Drive and Bagless Parkway, which will add additional turn lane, and there will be a signal installed temporarily at that intersection. So it'll allow traffic to be able to get in and out through Mosswood Drive while the patent is closed.
Okay, so they'll be able to come from, all the way from 108 up Patton and then, or Swissco? And then, and then deviate onto, okay, okay. Good deal. Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Twenty, take appropriate action on the terms of the following members of various boards/districts. A, Mr. Randy Ormentor.
I'd like to defer until 2020.
Second.
January 2020, sorry.
I have a motion by Mr. Latour to defer till January 2020 and a second by Mr. Brain. Any discussion? Any objection? A is deferred. B, Ms. Tracy Fontana.
I'd like to defer for 60 days.
I have a motion to defer for 60 days by Mr. Latour and a second by Mr. Brain. Any discussion? Any objection? That is deferred for 60 days. Mr. Keith Cooley?
I'd like to defer for 60 days as well.
Motion by Mr. Latour to defer for 60 days and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any objection? Or any discussion? Any objection? That item is deferred. C, Mr. David Guidry. I would ask one of my fellow jurors to appoint Ms. Joanne Fazette.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Scott to appoint Ms. Joanne Fazette and a second by Mr. Guidry. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? She is appointed. D, Mr. Ronald R. Harmon.
To reappoint.
Second.
I have a motion to reappoint by Mr. Fornum and a second by Mr. Collins. Any, any discussion? Any objection? He is reappointed. E, Mr. Gaston Dubrock.
I'd like to appoint Mr. Kenneth Derwin.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Latour to appoint Mr. Derwin and a second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Any objection? He is appointed. F, Mr. Milton Castile.
Move to appoint Mr. Shannon Castile.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bears to appoint Mr. Shannon Castile and a second by Mr. Fornum. Any discussion? Any objection? He is appointed. G, Mr. Stephen Smith.
Move to reappoint Mr. Steve Smith.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bears to reappoint Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Fornum. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? He is reappointed. H, Mr. Darren S. Miller.
I'd like to appoint Mr. Kenneth Landry.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Latour to appoint Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. McMillan. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? He is appointed. Ms. Sally Muir.
I'd like to appoint Mr. Eric Johnson, senior.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Latour to appoint Mr. Johnson and a second by Mr. Guidry. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? He is appointed. Uh, Mr. Gilbert Glenn Franklin.
Please reappoint Mr. Gilbert Franklin.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Latour to reappoint Mr. Franklin and a second by Mr. Collins. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? He is reappointed. J, Mr. Mike Toby Bergeron.
Move to reappoint.
Second.
Mr. Mike Toby Bergeron.
I have a motion by Mr. McMillan to reappoint Mr. Bergeron and a second by Mr. Guidry. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? He is reappointed. K, Mr. Don Frugé.
Move to appoint, reappoint Mr. Don Frugé.
I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont to reappoint Mr. Frugé and a second by Mr. Fornum.